Okay.
There's an opportunity to help one of her yard.
Yep, exactly. Good morning. It is Tuesday, February 21st, and it is 10:00 a.m. And this is our regularly scheduled city council work session like we do the first meeting of the month. We are going to start with introduction of new city employees. So I'll turn it over to Terry.
I'm here. Good morning, Miracle Town City Council. It is my pleasure to introduce our newest employees to the city of Montrose. We're going to start with Commander Cox, who's going to introduce to Police Department.
Hello. Good morning. Kristy, do you mind standing up? We've got Kristy Sheedy here. She's our records division. She's been with us about a month now, I guess, probably. Does a great job. She's already catching on, talking with her supervisors. Just rock star, and we're glad to have her. Her husband also works with us. He's an SRO, so we're glad to welcome you to the team. Want to tell us a little bit about yourself?
You almost got to say it. Almost. Grew up in Golden, so native Coloradan, fourth generation. We have a small ranch just out the town off Isola Road. Spend a lot of time working the horses and growing our hay.
Great. Welcome. Nice to meet you.
Thank you. Nice to meet you.
Thanks. And then next, we have Larry Graves. Larry came to us from Colorado State Patrol. He was a corporal. He was with them for 27 years, and he's going to be one of our school resource officers. And just over the weekend, talking to somebody in our community said how excited they were that he's joining Montrose Police Department, and he's worked in the schools prior when he was with CSP. So we're glad to have Larry. Look forward to working with him here in the future.
And I grew up, my father was in the military. I joined the Army for five years as a military police officer. Got out and again, 27 years with Colorado State Patrol, last 10 years being here. And so I was in the schools with the state patrol, and it was time for me to retire, and I chose to come to the Montrose Police Department. My wife is a detective here, so I'm happy to continue to be a part of the community, help our children and our community out.
Fantastic. Welcome.
Hannah? Yes. Good morning. I am very happy to introduce Hannah McCray. Hannah's first day was last week, and she is the Operations Assistant for the City Managers Office. This position was formerly known as the Executive Assistant. We've changed the title to better represent the operational aspects that Hannah will be overseeing and coordinating in the City Managers Office. And Council, she has all of your cell phone numbers, and I'll make sure that you have hers as well, because Bill and I will be relying on her a lot to help keep things moving at the city. And Hannah, welcome.
Thanks. Again, I'm Hannah. I have worked in Montrose for almost 16 years now. I have three boys. Do a lot of the outdoor hobbies that everyone has pretty much shares in. I just came from Cafetera, worked for them for the last six years, doing a lot of office and HR sort of procedures. It was really a defined role, so I'm really excited. Thanks.
Fantastic. Welcome.
Mason Blair, who's our newest Parks employee, returning to the city. So that's what's, I'm really excited to have Mason back, which comes with about six years of experience in our park system, which is hugely important. So by the way, I'll let Mason tell you about himself, but we're really glad to have him back.
As you might have said at worship previously, I grew up in Colorado Springs. I moved over here about 2000, graduated from Sturridge High School. And like I said, six years in the park department, looking forward to at least another six more.
Great. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. You guys all get to go back and keep doing your training now. Okay, moving on to discussion items for our meeting. The first one is Montrose City Hall Phase Three Authorization Recommendation, and I'll turn it over to Public Works Manager Jim Scheich.
Good morning, Council. So we're here to talk about the third phase of our city hall project, and we'll have a presentation for you to show the concept and design, and also explain the authorization of the budget recommendation we have for you today. So I'll start off by introducing our project team. So Peter and Shannon are here with Blythe Group. Now, they're our architects. John Lofler with FCI Constructors is the CMGC, and Riley O'Brien is Dynamic Program Management. And they have been involved in this project through all the phases, so for Phase One and Phase Two, which were currently under construction right now, and then moving into this concept level of Phase Three. So as a brief overview of this project, we purchased the building at 400 East Main, which was formerly Wells Fargo, in early 2022. And since then, we've began and are nearly finished with Phase One and Phase Two, which include asbestos abatement, roof replacement, interior renovations, and creating new spaces inside, meaning rooms and such. We, like I said, we are nearly complete, coming down to kind of the crunch at the end of those phases, where these next few weeks will be pretty intense in getting a lot of things completed, with the intention of moving into the building with our city hall staff in March. So the third phase would include replacement of the facade, which is the biggest portion, windows, remaining roof on the building, and the surrounding sidewalk. So the design team is here to present our conceptual design and the elements that likely be included in our final design. So we asked Blythe to do this conceptual level design course. We gave them a few guidelines for that concept, many of which we heard from you all that were important, such as remove the ugly white fluted block, as it would be on the top of the list. And so that will be obviously included, this concept is removing all of it. We requested a noticeable entrance feature to complement other buildings at Civic Campus, including City Hall, the existing City Hall, the Elks Building, the new Police Department, which we're in now, and other historical buildings in the downtown area. We did not want it to be an overwhelmingly large government building, so we didn't want it to be one simple, basic facade that represented a large, overwhelming government. We didn't want to tie it into the Main Street feel without competing with other historic buildings, so we didn't want to outdo anybody, but we wanted it to tie into the existing historic feel downtown. And so in some way relate to the history of the corner, which that corner of Cascade Main is, it's got a lot of history to it. Many different bank buildings have been there and a lot of different styles. So without replicating the historic building, but kind of more of a tip of a hat to the history is kind of what we're asking for in this design. And that's where, with that kind of general broad guidance, we hand it off to Blythe and ask them to produce a design based on that. So Hannah, over to Shannon and Peter now, and they'll go through this exterior concept.
Okay. Yes, good morning. It's good to see you all again. I'm Peter Eisnabel with BG &amp; Co. We're just come up from Grand Junction. We are excited to talk to you about this. This is my colleague Shannon Power, and I'm actually going to let her kick this off by talking a little bit about the history of that corner, because that's driving some of what we're wanting to show you today.
Thank you, Karen. Appreciate it. Yes, it's a very exciting location, right, for sure. The fact that someone wanted to put some ugly fluted block on it is fine. I'm sure at the time it was a very cool thing to do, but you know, when you look at this photo, which was one of the first things we did when we toured the 400 Main Street building, is see this awesome historic representation of 400 East Main Street. And so this has been a really big inspiration for us as we're thinking about how we can do our best jobs to give it a facelift that it really deserves. So in my research, I've really been digging deep into what I've been finding for the city of Montrose, and I think probably about a decade ago, someone came up with this very cool brochure that really highlights all of the historic places downtown. I mean, there's 45 of them, right? Like the downtown Montrose has an awesome history to it, and you know, this is just a wonderful opportunity for us to revive a bit of it. So Lot Number 18, it's, you know, on the corner there of Cascade and Main. And you can even see in some of the other historic photographs, that little turret that's been on the very corner there that announced that it was First National Bank is really quite memorable in the silhouette of downtown Montrose. So just another cool opportunity for us to, you know, really see the history we have to work with here. And again, so now in my Googling and finding all sorts of great inspirational images, we have a really good, high-resolution image of this northwest corner here on Cascade and Main. And so I just kind of want to pull out and highlight a couple of really awesome features that, again, we're drawing inspiration from. So we've got this turret up here, which provides a nice height to everything there. There's this beautiful intricate cornice. And we have these kind of this cool kind of double column feature that happens, and you can even see that across the street from Cascade and Main. I think where Gun Barrel Tacos is right now, there's that very cool feature that looks very strong and classic. I mean, you can even see that the acorn lights that we still work a lot on to make sure that they're around downtown. Those show up in this 1940s picture, we think it's about 1940s. And then, of course, brick and masonry is a great building material for the western slope, and it would be a really good thing to incorporate into classical elements there. And so then we see sort of the 1960s, very modern, post-World War II rendition of the First National Bank, of course, a total change from that historic image we were looking at. You can see the windows are still there. We're still working with those, and those are a great thing to work with. And then also, you know, with all of our conversations, that corner sign that had the thermometer and probably digital clock on it, you know, through conversations with Jim, and I think that's quite like a community talking point. So it certainly announces that corner, but again, drawing inspiration for how can we, you know, make sure that we're doing our due diligence in serving this facade in both the right way. And then lastly, and I think we can just kind of look across the street, here's the beautiful city hall, which has served the city since 1926 as their city hall. So what, you know, we're doing a great job with the growth and getting everyone over to 400 Main Street. So depending on what happens with this building, maybe there's some features on here that we can, we can kind of draw from and try and incorporate into the new city hall, just to really pay the respects that it deserves, for sure. So there's these really cool stone arches there, I think are beautiful. And then while we're not suggesting we use this exact same color brick, there's definitely some gorgeous brick detailing that we can draw inspiration from. So that kind of sets us up for what we have to work with, which is our blank canvas here. And we don't have to, you know, talk too much about this. We know that the main entrance is staying in the same spot. We have these large windows that bring in a lot of light, so we'll work with that for sure. And then really, you know, it's a harsh facade that we really want to soften and make a lot more downtown friendly. With that, I'll turn over to you.
Okay, so let's go back one. One of my favorite stories of when we started working on the police building, we showed a bunch of photographs of buildings around town here and various other places to get ideas about what people liked and what this should look like. And this building received the most reactions in the negative. It was very obvious that we should not make it look this way. And so it makes me feel good to know that we can then work on a project to improve this one, that is one that received some criticism. So this is a first look at our concept drawings, and it really is just that. It's a concept still. It's not, nothing is set in stone or brick. And so it is a really a groupie of ideas that we're proposing to transform this building really into a good city hall location. So as you can see in the top image, like Jim mentioned, we were trying, we're trying to avoid creating this, making this look like one large building, because it actually does cover what used to be multiple lots. And so the, in the top image, the left part has a different rhythm to it, and it's different, different materials to really fit within the pedestrian scale of downtown, and to keep that rhythm of the buildings that are there. Same thing with the two-story. We're showing some interesting locations where we're proposing to increase the parapet height, namely at the main entrance on the corner, which is where the clock is. And I'll get into more detail about that here in just a second. So I'm going to run through some specific areas on this, and then we'll blow them up here so we can, we can see them a little better. Boy, these multiple screens really make that clock look avant garde, but it's just a round one, okay? So this would be the, I'm starting here, because this is that corner. This is where the entrance to the banks throughout the years on this site always were, and it's a very prominent corner, you know, Cascade and Main. So we're looking for a way to accentuate this without altering too much of the interior use. And so what we're, what we've been talking about here is adding something that markets back to that turret or cubicle that's there. And maybe, maybe this ends up being taller than what we're showing right now. We have, like I said, this is conceptual still, but the idea is to bring that corner back to prominence compared to what it is now, which is fairly underwhelming. And then we're, we're thinking about, maybe we could do a digital kiosk down there at the corner that adds back that temperature, you know, that used to be on the bank sign, just as a community, community feature to display the temperature, and then of course the clock as well. You know, the time and temperature signs at banks have kind of gone by the wayside because of people's phones, I guess, but it just, as a community feel to it, we thought, well, it'd be great to have a clock on that corner as well as the temperature. And then you can see some of the brick detailing that we're proposing, like Shannon mentioned. And of course, these are just gray images. We're not proposing two colors of gray brick, but the idea is that it would be two colors, you know, similar to what's here on the new PD. Again, paying homage to the existing building, not necessarily those colors. Bringing some double columns down in front of some of those windows. And then the other, the other thing that this would allow is to get some lighting, if I can get the mouse down here, you know, get some lighting for nighttime, you know, help bring the pedestrian scale down again. You can see some people down there at the scale, and so it helps, helps with that pedestrian feel, bringing, bringing some of those elements down to that level. Please, if you have any questions at any time, don't hesitate to stop me. So next, I'll focus in on the main entrance there. Like Shannon mentioned, the plan is to leave the main entrance where it currently is on that building, and that has a lot to do with the interior of the building, the layout that's, that's under construction right now, with some of the interior renovations we've been doing. But again, bringing the entrance back to prominence. I mean, you can tell where the entrance is now, but it's not, doesn't look like a city hall entrance, the way that it's configured right now. And so the thought was bring, bring more prominence back to the masonry columns, the sign that can say city hall, and again, a taller parapet that adds a bit of a cornice element that ties back to some of those features that we see in those old photographs.
I have a question about the entrance, but maybe Jim can answer it. Are we, we are probably required by Wells Fargo to leave sub-Wells Fargo ATM signage up?
Yes, on the door itself.
Okay.
We're not required to have it up above the door like it's currently.
Cool. Okay.
So I think the thought is it'd just be a decal on the door.
Okay, we aren't required to have a big wall. Great. Thank you.
So then you can also see that the area in between the two brick elements there, those windows, again, part of that existing curtain wall facade there, but those windows are into the public space and a conference room, the two of the more public rooms that are inside the building. And so our thinking is, well, maybe we change those out from the really dark tinted glass that's there now to something more clear that adds visibility and transparency. But because they go so low, it could be a good spot to put some art, art elements on the window, and maybe it's a silhouette of the Cascade, you know, range there or something. Again, just concepts, ideas, and so it just, just the thought is to bring some of these elements around us into the building, add interest, and as well as improve that pedestrian Okay, so now let's talk about the part that looks different. So again, the thought here is that we, we use the fenestration and the materials on the facade to change the scale of the building. Right now, it looks like a giant, modern building, and it's low, and it's awkwardly proportioned for walking down Main Street. And we think it makes a lot of sense to change the materials so that it almost looks, has the appearance, appearance of a different building on the outside. And so the thought here is this could be a more modern part of the facade with some architectural metal cladding, and we have some photos of examples of that next. But we're actually also planning to have windows here, because there are offices already on the other side of that wall with no windows. So that idea went out of style in the 60s, and so we're going to put some windows back in there. But again, trying to keep that sill, the sill height up, so it doesn't feel like whoever's working in that office is on Main Street, and then you're going to feel some, some kind of separation there. And so those sills that are there represent a four-foot high with those. So here's some, going back, this main, main part of the wall here, the thought is to use this architectural metal cladding product. It's quite a bit lighter than masonry, so it would involve less foundation work that we're talking about having to do where we're doing masonry on the facade. We don't know all the details of that yet, the foundation work. You know, we're pulling off masonry, so our hope is that we can put masonry back on without causing too many issues, but there's definitely going to be scenarios where we have to improve this a little bit, I think. Anyway, on this, if we use a lighter product, that'll, that'll help negate that, but also gets that separation of difference between, you know, a modern style and more classical. And so the, this, these are just sample images, obviously, but the thought is that kind of a shingle with some standing scene feel to it. And it's a, it's a long-lasting product, and so that's obviously another aspect of we want to make sure maintenance is easy and long-lasting as well. And then the front, the front part of that, that's the smaller element down where the windows, the thought was, well, we could do some perforated metal panels that really bring it, you know, kind of modernize it, maybe, maybe it kind of gives a little bit of precedence for some different development of Main Street. And again, we're not proposing these images. These are just examples of what can be done with metal panels. So then the two images on the left show a daytime and nighttime difference with perforated metal panels, where you can show patterns, and they look different from daytime to nighttime if it's lighted from behind. And then the image on the, on the right shows how much detail you really can get in these perforated panel images these days. We don't want to use this throughout the facade of the building, because it can get fairly costly to do that, but we thought, well, it could be a good, again, piece of art for downtown. And so as we think through that possibility, our thought was, well, what would we put there? Okay, so one thought we had, and these, these are just, again, three sample images of ideas we had about this. One thought was, well, we could do an image of water, of the river, and it would be a fairly abstract kind of image to put on there. Could get a topographic map of the Black Canyon or another feature in the area and use that across that facade. Or the one that's shown on the building there is a, we could do a map of the city of Montrose, and we get it blown up to the right location, and it's recognizable, and people know where Towns and Vins and Main Street goes off at an angle, and that could be a fairly interesting abstracted art, art piece to put on the front of the building. Okay, so as we get to the, this is the, what we're calling the West Facade Facing Cascade. We have a two-story portion there that's existing two-story. We're planning to add some windows to it as well, based on the spaces that are inside. But the thought here again would be the architectural metal cladding with some perforated panels at the top, more just standard perforated, not necessarily with an image. But we could incorporate a sign at the corner that says city hall, like you see right here, into those metal panels. And then the other thought was, well, this is a big blank wall, and the spaces there, we can't add windows to all of them, because part of it's a mechanical room and those kind of things. And so it doesn't make sense, but it could make sense to use that as a, as a public art artwork or a mural on the building. Maybe it rotates every five years, and there's a contest to get your image on there. I, you know, just brainstorming ideas. But the thought was that would help activate that alley in Cascade side with some very interesting pedestrian scale. So as we get to the alley side, I don't know, probably all of you are familiar with the alley side of this building, and it's, it's pretty awesome. I think we should just leave it the way it is, right? But maybe not. But so, so the deal is that alley entrance is really going to be the main entrance for staff. And so we want to, we think it makes a lot of sense to wrap that corner with that mural, as you can see in the bottom left there, and continue these, these masonry and metal expressions across that facade. This is also showing changes to the windows. The existing windows are small and narrow, and we're thinking about enlarging those. But as well as adding, adding lighting under, under the canopy, you know, where the, where the entrance is, so that it feels welcoming and not, not like you're going in a backdoor. But that's, it's a, it's a less complex facade, I would say, but an important one because of the amount of activity that we'll be having back there. And so we don't want to have any more of that, that side of the building either. So that's the extent of what we have. If you have any questions, we could have an answer to that, otherwise I think I'm supposed to, like you talked to me, right, Jim? Okay.
And if you want to know what the old bank building looked like, go to Delta and look at the one there.
Exactly. It was part of the, I think you're right. It was the same, huh? Now that you say that, I recognize it.
All right, actually, I'll have John come up and talk about some of the construction perspective and how we're approaching it from actual constructability.
Good morning, all. From a construction aspect, we've been involved in some of this design process, and just we're even doing some exploratory work right now to hopefully have a better understanding of what we're going to get into. Obviously, we are moving folks into this building here in the next month or so, so it'll be an occupied space, and that always brings up challenges that we're trying to address as well. So there would be some movement around the building during the construction process, trying to tackle one section at a time, so to speak, if we can, because we're going to have to move some folks inside this building so we can put windows into those offices, try to have the least amount of impact to the interior, but there will be construction activities around the rim, of course. Overall, yes, for the time that it's going to take on this, right now, we're projecting anywhere from six to eight months for completion. Kind of depends on when the start date would be, what are the conditions, how we do end up phasing that to keep the sidewalk open for pedestrians and limit the impact to the occupants of the building. So all of those things are things that we're researching at this point, and as this gets further defined, then we'll definitely hone in on those. Certainly enjoy working in this area of the state and in Montrose. We're glad that you have us on board for doing the first couple phases of this building. We have a great team to work with, and look forward to hopefully bringing this together for you, so that you have another nice artwork to see in your downtown area. Any questions about the construction part, or maybe I can go first?
Yeah, actually, I have some questions. So I always appreciate the vision that architects bring, but sometimes it's not their checkbook, and they come up with these grand plans. So what do you think, from a construction point of view, would maybe be an opportunity for us to spend less money? Where do you see, like, what's costing the most of this? Because we don't have a breakdown. I don't have something in front of me that's showing everything, but some, from But from your point of view, construction-wise, what's the most expensive part we might be able to cut out?
These are areas that we already looked at. So we've had some conversations about that through this design process. There's still some unknown that we haven't been able to finalize yet. Peter mentioned it, you know, the new facade that we put on there, when we go from a brick to a metal, then most likely we don't have to affect anything with our foundation. As we start adding more brick and potentially more weight to that, then we have to look at some foundation areas that we're going to have to work on to properly support that. That could be one area. Still some investigation underway to see if that's going to help back off a little bit. We've talked about, I think we have in the budget now, all new sidewalks around there. They're probably in need of replacement. We have some stone melt that we're planning out of what would be the north side. So those things are in there. Possibly they could be scaled back some of what's done in those areas. The windows around the building, there's some of those that I would not want to back off from. And we've actually found some investigation that there's potentially some areas with openings in the wall. When you come around the corner to the alley, if we were to scale back on something, maybe those areas there get lightened up a little bit on what we do as far as how basic we did on the building. So there's areas like that we're looking at. I can't hone in on any one specific point that is driving the cost of it because it all just kind of multiplies around the building.
Sure. This perforated metal is not inexpensive. It sounds like maybe, like, it looks cool, but...
It's going to have some expense to it, yes.
And what could you do as an alternative to that at a lesser cost?
It could be a printed theme on there or it could just be a standard, you know, maybe not have the imaging on it, but just a regular, like, I think you showed that on one other area around there, some perforated person metal, that we just use a standard pattern to it, but still differentiate from the other areas. The lighting on there, again, we want to make sure it's illuminated. We don't want to give you a beautiful building we can't see at night, so we definitely want to look at that. But that's also an area of conversation is how much of that lighting and where is it that's going to drive some of that cost as well.
Is this project such that we're maybe just spread the cost out? We can do it some now, some later? Something that we can spread out or has we done kind of all in one piece?
There's always a potential for that. We've had some conversation about that as well. Part of what we've looked at is typically if we take the entire project all at once, we have some cost savings in doing that because we're mobilizing here, we're breaking the subs on board, they're here, we're working continuously around it. We don't have to leave and then come back. The other part we're seeing a lot of that affects us now is escalation in pricing. So if we can capture it all in one, we don't have that risk of two years down the road, now all of a sudden this product we want to use is twice the money. I mean, those things do happen in the economy at this point. So obviously, from our perspective, if we had the whole thing to do at once and we could get into everywhere, that would be the most cost-effective one. We do still have to move around the building in a strategic fashion just so we can keep it occupied and work around those. Plus, if we're going through winter months, we're going to have some cost associated there, just depending on what that looks like, the timing of doing this.
I think, you know, from what you've shown us thus far, I think you guys have done a wonderful job of showing what can be done to this rather ugly building. I'm wondering, without losing much of the curb appeal, so to speak, that you would be creating, kind of to follow up on what Barbara was asking, are there things we can look at that while we don't lose the curb appeal, that we could look at different materials or way of doing things that might bring the cost down some? We'd have the option of saying, well, this package is less and it provides this and this one's even less and it provides this, but we're losing this if we do it. Something that we could have as options to widen?
Certainly. Yeah, we can work with the design team on those. Right now, we've pretty much put our budget figures together based off what was just presented to you. There can be some VE options, we call them, value engineering, that we typically like to account on projects. Okay, so we changed this section of the site and what's that going to do to us? Can we go to some of this last year? Where can we look at those options to trim some of that cost? And we do go through that exercise quite often.
On the perforated panels you're speaking of, are those totally punched through or are they just...
Yes.
Indented?
They are punched through, but that's not, that wouldn't be the weatherproof skin that they're out in front of that.
I'm just concerned about making it home for bugs.
So... Some of the way you're talking about is maybe alternates in the design and looking at what options, as we start to get further into design, what options we have and what can be either eliminated or changed, and we look at that through alternates. But let me bring up Riley. He was going to talk about some of our contracting approach and some of that is in the way we approach from a procurement standpoint. And we can talk a little about alternates and I'll follow up with how we've, you know, compiled contingencies and stuff for that sort of thing. But alternates, I think, is kind of what you're looking at as far as options and we plan on doing that throughout the design process, so.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Riley O'Brien, Dynamic Program Management. We're Jim on this building, a little bit on the Rotary Amphitheater and on all the phases of 400 East Main so far. Planning on doing a similar delivery method of this CMGC Construction Manager, General Contractor, and risk of used here in this building on the previous phases at 400 East Main and on the Rotary Amphitheater for this project for FCI's contract. Benefits of that, I think the biggest one is the one we're just talking about right now, is having FCI onboard early so that they can help with the cost estimating of those various options early on so we can start looking at the pricing of those perforated panels or other materials and use that information to guide our decision-making through the design rather than designing in a bubble and then going out for bids and realizing that perforated metal is expensive or maybe there's a more cost-effective way to do that. And the other big tool is the one that Jim was focusing on with the added alternates and writing those into the scope early. So we could say, you know, maybe the budget's tight and we don't have the budget at the start for some of those items, but as project risks get behind us with the existing building, you know, you never know what you're going to find when you open up a wall. And it's great that FCI's been in the building already and starting to poke around and seeing what we have for existing conditions to help manage some of that risk as we open up the building more and start to see what we have to work with with the existing conditions. But those add alternates give us the ability to manage the project risk within the overall project budget to get maximum value out of that budget by getting pieces in, kind of having a baseline scope that will work within the budget and then add those parts in later as that project risk gets behind us. And the way that CMGC contract is, right now, we have their conceptual estimate and then each design phase will have another estimate until we get to the GMP, guaranteed maximum price. And then FCI builds for all work under that guaranteed maximum price with invoices and receipts from subcontractors to their only charging for the work that is put into place. I think that's, I'm trying to stay high level without...
No, that's a good explanation of how it works. That's great.
All right, any questions?
Thank you.
I'd like a little more into the financial part of it and explain what's part of that, the overall 4.5 million is about the overall budget question. So let me explain that. I think that'll help, let's walk through that. So in the packet, there's a financial breakdown shows, you know, a CMGC estimate from FCI Constructors of about 3.4 million. And that is, again, based on a very conceptual level drawing. So definitely not enough information there to provide necessarily accurate GMP-style number, but enough that we can put a budget number to the price. That's where the 3.4 comes from, is FCI. And their team has reviewed the information we have to get us to a close number. Owner-direct contractors is our design team, Geotech, CMT, and even Dynamic would be direct owner contracts. Direct owner purchases, things like cameras, outdoor furniture, some fairly minor items in this project. And then we get into the contingencies and that's where, at this level, these contingencies are significant. And I think it's important because of the level that we're at in design. So there's a lot of unknowns. I think the renderings and sketches that we're working on for right now leave a lot to be determined. And that's where these contingencies are listed to help, you know, once we uncover something or find the element that we weren't expecting, that these contingencies are in that, are in your, at this point, to allow for the budget to cover what we may find. So let me explain these different types first and then we'll talk about what happens if they're not needed. So the design contingency is kind of what it sounds like in that at this point in design, we don't know a lot of things. So as we start to get further into the design, getting more of the details about how attachments are made in existing structure or how we're going to complete that building envelope as far as moisture and that sort of thing, start to figure out those details, there may be things we don't know of now and we lost some kind of design or construction cost. That's what that one's for. Escalation is that, you know, we've seen a 1% to 1.5% escalation per month. And by the time from now to time we would potentially sign a GMP contract would be four to six months and that's where this potentially would escalate. I would say we've seen an improvement as far as a reduction in escalation recently, but that's a bit of an unknown still and based over the last year or two, we're kind of seeing this 1% to 1.5% per month. And then an owner's contingency, which is very typical for every project, at this level, typically 10% to 15% is a minimum. But because there are contingencies that we're breaking out, we feel like a 12% is a good starting point. And so ideally, I think in a perfect world, we get through later levels of design where we're ready to sign a GMP with FCI, that we didn't use any of these contingencies. I think that would be best case scenario and if it's possible, probably a little unlikely, but it's possible. So what happens if they're not needed? Well, obviously, they wouldn't be signed into a contract if they're not needed. We get to a GMP where FCI provides a true cost estimate on a DD level or a CD level design, that's what's used in their contract. And that would just be that the budget approved here is not utilized. It would remain in the general fund reserves and not a part of the FCI contract. I think we're including it now because it's a possibility. We would work under this and not exceed this number here, but the intention isn't that we would use every last penny of this. The intention is obviously to be as frugal as we can and come in well under this. But because of the early stage of design, we don't, there's a lot we don't know. And that's why these are included at this level now. Maybe not where we've seen in other projects typically, we don't see this many contingencies that add up to this amount because of, this is the first time we've come in this early in a design level with an estimate like this. So I guess that being said, this would be funded from general fund reserve and what is unexpended or unused as far as contract amounts would remain in the general fund Did that explain the contingencies well enough that makes sense? Okay. All right, well, with that, we would be happy to answer any other questions there may be or talk further into what options we may have if you'd like to discuss that.
Thanks, Jim. I think because we're missing two out of five counselors today for excused illness situations, I know that you would love to have council direction today, but I think we need to wait until all five of us are here to have a robust discussion and provide some direction to staff. But I know we had presenters come from Grand Junction and whatnot, so I want to make sure that we have an opportunity to ask them questions and ask you questions, but then hold off maybe on the discussion part until five of us are here. Does that make sense to you two?
Yeah.
Okay. And I'll ask our other counselors to watch this recording so they can get caught up with the presentation. Do we have other questions for the presenters while they're here that might help?
Yeah, I don't think so.
Okay.
So we want to follow up at the next work session with a discussion?
Discussion. I think that's what we need to do because it's a pretty big decision, it's a lot of money, and I just want all five counselors to be involved in that. But I think right now, we have good information. Like I said, I'll ask Ed and Dave to watch the presentation so they're caught up when we discuss it next.
Let me just ask this question. When would you be asking for counsel to take action on this as opposed to giving you some direction? What is...
Well, typically, if, you know, we would go to council meeting in two weeks from now and that's when we could potentially vote on this approval of the 4.5. We can delay that. We can go to work session next week and then push out that final approval until two weeks after that. At this point, you know, we're waiting on this conversation and this approval to begin design. So it really doesn't affect anything other than that, that we would begin design potentially two weeks later. But in the grand scheme of things, this is quite a long project and we would be looking at, you know, summertime completion next year. And so a delay of two weeks to have more discussion about it, I'd say it's insignificant in the overall project. That we take two weeks now to talk more is totally appropriate. It doesn't really affect the overall schedule, I'd say.
So if, whenever that time is that you come to us and ask for counsel to take action, you would be asking us to approve up to the 4.5 with the understanding that you will be doing value engineering and different things during the course of the next...
Correct.
...ensuing months to look at ways to bring that number down?
Yeah. So that, yeah, that was the request and is, we can look at changing that approach though. This is how we've done it on other projects that we've found successful, but there is other approaches that we could take. This approach is probably the quickest timeline and that's why we started here, but we can, we could go through design first, get to the point where we're at that DD or CD level of design and get a more accurate cost estimate at that time. That would, before we come to council for approval, and then we can do that approach where you're approving just a contract amount to FCI rather than an overall project budget, that delays the process some to do that. That's why we didn't start there, but that is an option. That may or may not change the bottom line. I would say that there's, it's probably likely that the bottom line is very similar to what we're showing here, but it would get us further in the process before we have approval. That's an option. And open to your thoughts on that.
Well, I think I just want to make sure that we create the right image that we are attempting to create, but we also understand what we're getting into from a financial point of view and that we, I want to make sure that we make a statement, but we make it within our budget. And that's what I think the important discussion is that we have to have, not whether or not we're going to do it, but how can we do it most cost-effectively and still come up with the product I think the community wants and needs, but not frivolously spending money in areas where perhaps we could save.
Yeah. Agreed. And some of that has definitely been in our design conversations already. So, you know, the material itself in the perforated panels is probably, I would say, similar, maybe slightly more expensive than a stone or a brick. But in the constructability and the fact that we don't have to do foundation work, it's going to be quite less, I would say, overall, right? We can price it both ways to look at it, but just in understanding of what it would take to do more stone work there, it's likely going to be more than that. So we approached that type of facade with the intent of being lower cost. And so I think, I think it is. And we can obviously price it both ways. That's part of that design process to go through in pre-con with FCI to really evaluate that is it truly cheaper or is that just kind of our guess at this point? So that is part of our design process that takes us, you know, four to six months from the time it's approved, is that, that process of really evaluating each option and looking at, maybe it is truly cheaper to do a different type of facade and then we would consider that. So I think at this stage, there's more to get the overall, you know, if this budget is where you're comfortable at, then we could move forward with that or we can kind of step back and have more discussions. Sounds like that's at least what we want to do next, is have more discussion.
I think we have to have more discussion before, I don't think, I'm comfortable saying, bring this to a vote in two weeks, given that two out of five of us aren't here for the discussion. the discussion, so I'm anxious to get started, I'm really excited about the project, but I think we need to have a little more discussion, and not just say, it sounds great, we'll vote in two weeks.
And I think it's only fair, as you say, to the other two council members that they input this discussion, before the three of us would give some direction.
Yeah, it's a little more in-depth than just ordering a new truck that we need to buy, or agreeing to some asphalt that we need to buy, and I just, I want all five of us to be a part of that discussion.
Are there any potential grants out there to assist with this, bringing back a little one to a historic style?
I don't think so. We can talk to the History Colorado, but I don't think there's going to be any.
You know, we're not rehabilitating really as, right now, this building, there's not, there might be some of the historic brick left, and we're excited to see that on the cascade side, but ultimately, and in some ways unfortunately, a lot of that destruction has already happened over time, and to me, for what it's worth, you know, I've really appreciated the way the architects have worked with us to make it compatible with the beautiful historic buildings on Main Street, but also not try to replicate them and compete with them, so I appreciate that, and it also seems, you know, the cheapest options, which Jim shared with us from the beginning, would be to make really minimal changes, and just sort of, you know, you can envision what those might look like, and so it seems like we have a hybrid right now.
Yeah, yeah, that was, you know, definitely when we first started, there was concepts of raising the parapet on the whole building, getting it to match that second floor level throughout, and that was a cost, like, that's one that was, you know, not as, maybe even getting a few of those things that kind of feels like it competes with other historic buildings, it's almost too big at that point, a little too prominent, and it's costly. So those are things that we're removing, that's why you kind of see that that higher parapet was only in a couple subtle spots that we really thought it was most impactful, but the rest of it, we didn't look at that concept of raising that parapet up, and that, I think cost was a big driver of that.
And I think maybe diving into that in a full discussion with the rest of council would be really important, because it's, it seems like, it seems like when we first talked about doing this, I, in my recollection, it cost less than 4.5, and so all of a sudden it's like, I mean, I thought we were going to maybe take off a layer of stucco, and it just got really big, and I just want to have a more robust conversation about how much we want to spend on this project. It's awesome looking, but is that our highest priority right now when we know we need a public works building and stuff? Okay, any other questions that would, okay, thank you very much, and thanks for our guests for coming in today.
Yeah.
Okay, the next item for discussion this morning is the 2023 Crack Seal Material Purchase Recommendation. Street Superintendent Nick Pretty, Pretty, right?
Pretty.
Pretty.
So, yeah, I'll introduce Nick, Rick is our street superintendent, and he's been handling obviously all of our crack sealing, patching, all things associated with street maintenance, and doing a great job, so I'll hand it over to him to kind of explain this purchase and sole source for our crack seal.
Great. Before you start, Nick, you also kind of supervise the snow removal that's been going on?
Yes.
Good job.
Hey, thank you. Appreciate that.
Yeah, it's a lot of snow, and I think there are always going to be people who complain about snow, but a pretty impressive job considering that it just kept coming and coming and coming, so.
Yeah, it was one of those storms.
Yeah, so thanks for all that good work.
Well, it's a pleasure to be here, nice to see you all again. I'm here to present the purchase recommendation for our annual crack seal material purchase. As part of our asphalt budget, we have, we have budgeted $90,000 for our crack seal material. It's a unique product that comes from Craftco, it's specified for our type of machine and our climate that we have here. You're asking for $93,741, it is $3,000 over, and that will be taken out of the remainder of our asphalt budget. This year, we're going to be working in Zone D. If you guys are interested in those zones, I'd recommend going on our website, we have a more detailed map that kind of over, it's an overview of our maintenance area, the different areas that we, that we maintain, and what years we're doing what treatment. So, we're going to be working in Zone D, last year we were in that area doing patching. We get a little bit better of an idea of the scope of work that we're going to need to do for crack seal when we're in that area the year previous. Yeah, I think that's, that'll do it for us this year, hopefully, so. Guys have any questions on that?
Pretty straightforward.
Yeah. Pretty easy.
Yeah.
All right, we'll bring it back to the council meeting.
Sounds fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, this general city council discussion, is there anything either of you wanted to talk about?
I don't have anything.
Okay, then staff, anything from staff that we need to be updated on or brought to our attention?
It's a small thing-ish, but also big. We just saw, we were sitting here, that the CML registration opened, and so you'll be hearing from our deputy city clerk about the registration process, so anything you can do to get your information back to her quickly, and if you have any special requests to let her know, and she'll get everybody registered for that conference.
And note that it runs Sunday through Wednesday, or something weird, instead of Tuesday through Friday, like, the dates are different. So, when you look at your week, don't just assume that you know that CML is always the second half of the week. And also, Lisa, you've probably already looked at the city council meeting calendar, it usually falls between two councils. No, it usually falls the same week of.
And this time it wasn't in conflict though, from the February, right?
Okay, yeah, I think it was between this time, okay.
And it is shown on the city council calendar for the year, so we, Lisa put it colored on your city council calendar, so let's see that too.
Okay. Good deal, thanks for that.
And I think we should imagine Lisa just had a work anniversary.
Yeah?
And we shut the day down just so she could have the day off.
Good deal, well, if there's...
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Then if there's nothing else, we will reconvene at 6:00 PM for our regular city council meeting. Thanks everyone.